Formally open the January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three, open session meeting of the air planning board. Um, the first thing I want to talk about is the agenda, and I just want to say, oh, thank you for changing the the meeting mids from November ninth to October twenty fifth because we just got the November ninth today. But I think we got, we, you had, I remember.
Yeah.
We can do the twenty fifth. Nisoya is not here, so they asked us to, do we need to take a vote to extend it?
Uh, yes.
When we arrive there?
Yeah. It should be a motion to continue the hearings until February fourteenth.
Beautiful, so no one let me forget that when we arrive there, so Nisoya isn't there. And then there's some complexity about Solar Two that we'll, we'll talk about when we get there. So that said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous, it's, uh, the agenda's approved. Any covenant bond releases?
Not tonight.
Okay, Solar Two. Excuse me. Yes, please, I'm sorry, Ken, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You want something to read? So, what was the date of the meeting that we had internally, was that a week ago Tuesday?
Uh, yes, yes.
So, a week ago Tuesday, we had a meeting of the, of the five families, we got, all the heads of the different departments got together. Uh, so, representing planning, myself, and, and of course Mark, Heather was there, Dan Van Skowick, three people from fire, two from police, including the chief, um, who might maybe, uh, Charlie, the building inspector, and anyone else? I think that's the group, and Carly, and Carly Antonelli. So we had a long discussion about next steps, you know, and we, and through consensus, and it really was a consensus, it was felt that even were we to be sympa- supposed to hypothetically were sympathetic to, to the applicant's uh, appeal for the bond monies, approve the schedule to the bond, the issue that, uh, approved to be the rub is like, that we, without a verified set of, of approved signed plans, we have nothing to measure any subs- and we have nothing to measure the schedule of values against, we have nothing to measure uh, the performance against, because how would we even review it if we don't know what the target goal is? And we can't use the original plans because the as-built currently today is so different from what they originally submitted that it's irrelevant, we can't just say, oh, let's go back to that because everything's already changed unless they're gonna, is the applicant, I'll say, rip it out, start all over, which I don't think is at all on the table or, or applicable. So, um, did you want to cut in here?
Uh, yes, I'll just mention that, uh, what, uh, what Mr. Golds has requested of the town was, was that, uh, Dan Van Schoutwick, you know, DPW superintendent, and I, and perhaps one other person, uh, review the, rather than submit a full set of modified site plans, what they gave, you know, that's why I was, we were a little confused, you know, they talked about these August plans, or construction record plans, is the term they use. Um, they gave like a markup of the original plan that was approved in two thousand and twenty to Heather, which was not a full set, it was more like, here's how the road will change, or how we're planning to change the road, here's how we're planning to change the guardrail, here's how we're planning to change some of the stormwater facilities. So, that was what they, they were requesting, that Dan Van Schoutwick and I agree, you know, on our own, with, with them being, being there as well, to, um, accept those, as sort of an interim plan that would allow, allow for the bonding that they proposed, the new bonding, the thirty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty, to be agreed upon, later, of course, I would have had to have been ratified by the board, they wanted an internal meeting first um, of the engineering staff and myself and, you know, perhaps the planning board members, uh, to look at this and, you know, bless that approach. Uh, however, what transpired was, uh, Dan did not like that idea, um, at all, you know, he said, you know, he, for various reasons, uh, time-wise and, and commitment-wise, you know, that, that wouldn't work, and we all agreed around the table, that whole group that Jonathan has mentioned, that the best course of action, so there's no confusion, and we follow proper procedure, is to request that they submit a formal site plan modification that would require a, you know, public meeting, public hearing, just as we would normally do with a butter notification, you know, the payment of the uh, three hundred dollars to get a modified site plan, just as we've done for twenty-two Pittsburgh Road, so, you know, a long outline, so, that was, you know, I thought, you know, we had a very productive meeting, and that was a good recommendation to come out of the meeting, rather than dealing with these piecemeal plans, you know, pieces of plans, I should say, um, we would get a complete site plan set, and as you see in my letter to Cal dated January twenty-third, I reiterated what occurred at the meeting and saying that we felt that this is much cleaner, we'd get a full plan set, we'd hire an independent period view engineer to look at their engineering changes, stormwater management, all that, and, you know, they would come in, and I, and I mentioned in my letter to them that I didn't think that was that onerous, because if they already have these interim plans, just fix them up so that they can be part of this new plan set. So, what I was thinking before we got the letter from Attorney Costa today, this afternoon, uh, what I was thinking is that, you know, assuming they would be in the room this evening, uh, that the planning board would entertain a motion to request, uh, or actually to require that the applicant submit a, uh, full plan set for site plan modification to the board, and we would try to schedule them at the earliest possible time.
And I just want to add, this is important.
Right.
This was universally approved and enthusiastically favored by everyone at the table at this meeting. I just want to add that.
By the department heads in the town manager's office.
The department heads, town manager's office, everyone was on board with like, this is the right way to go.
Right, yes.
Okay.
And, can I just say, I mean, you're saying that Dan didn't, and I, I just want to clarify for
Right.
the record, that Dan didn't like this?
But he did not like the approach of.
That, that what we were being asked, right, that what we were, we were being asked to go with these August plans and, and.
Look. To more piecemeal, uh, approach, right.
Right, and you're saying it's more onerous, but I think the words would be, this is the correct, like, we would ask any applicant who did not adhere to the plans that they submitted to submit, I'm sorry, what's the technical process you're recommending?
Uh, the site plan modification.
The site plan modification, like, it, it's inappropriate to ask us to not go again, I need to, yes.
Right. Right, yeah. So, that, that was, you know, that was my, assuming that they were going to be in the audience tonight, I was going to recommend that the planning board make a motion to require a site plan modification application.
To follow the rules.
And, and, you know, and to do all that. However, we received this letter from Attorney Costa just today.
Yes.
And like, you know, I, I only, you know, read it very quickly through once.
Yes.
So, whenever I see a legal thing like this, uh, you know, my, my cautionary instincts go up.
Yep.
It's like, if I could, if I could have been in the room on December thirteenth and, you know, wasn't suffering from my leg and all this, I would have said, no, 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 don't make any actions, and that's kind of my instinct now.
Okay.
Um, yes, and I, you know, and there may be some misunderstandings on Adam Costa's part as to what, uh, GPR had given us for these plans, you know, it's not a full set, but, you know, we, we had a very quick, uh, um, internal email exchange with the town council today after this came in, just, just an hour and a half ago, where I suggested that just as we did, you know, before, when anything thorny comes up, that we have an internal meeting with her over Zoom or something, uh, to discuss this, the ramifications.
Who's her, Amy?
Amy Questle, yes, the, from KP Law, our town council. So, my inclination is to see what comes out of that before the planning board makes any motions to request a full site plan modification application at this time. Now, had they been in the room tonight and had we not received the letter today from Attorney Costa, I would have, you know, stuck to my original plan of action, which, recommendations, which would have required that.
Excuse me, Jim.
But, you know, yes.
Are we required by law that we can only make a finding if the applicant is in attendance?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either.
No, no, I believe, you know, we can, I, the only caution I put out there is, you know, it's a legal matter, and who knows, you know, what could come out of it, I, you know.
Okay.
My, part of my job description, I see it as, is to try to keep the board out of legal trouble.
So, if I could, if I could.
So, that, that's it, anyway.
I acknowledge Jeff, can you give me a second?
No, please.
So, I actually engaged the council, Amy Questle, in an email exchange on our, you know, our air platform, and I said, uh, you know, because the way her original note was, oh, you know, they had submitted these plans, et cetera, et cetera, and I had to clarify from Ms. Questle that some of the facts were incorrect, that we never received amended plans, far less than approved them, and I, I, I actually put it to a point blank, I said, well, is there any legal prohibition from us from arriving at a, this, a finding that they must submit the amended plan set? She said, no, that is within the purview of the board, and we have the right to do that, so, that said, I do want us to deliberate and decide what we want to do here, we can say, we're gonna wait till the fif- fourteenth, Rohe will be here, or the applicant will be here, problem with council, and we can wait, or we can say, you know what, uh, we have the legal authority, we have been patient for many months, uh, we are not happy with the way things have been conducted out there in their current state, and the most important thing from my mind is that it's impossible to, for me to even think about schedules of values and even a third-party review if we don't have that for, that, that, that plan that says, this is what we're targeting against, this is what we're looking at. So, I'm of, uh, I'm open-minded on this, at this, frankly, I would not be upset if we came to a vote and decided on the findings, but I don't want, I want that to be a matter of discussion among us.
Jeff? Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I would ask the question is, what finding are you recommending we get?
Well, the, the finding is that we, we require, finding is that we, we require the applicant to submit an amended, amended site plan, a formal public hearing review.
Thank you, because, um, I look at this and, uh, Air Solar Two. Attorney Costa speaks of it, um, Mr. Gard speaks of it, this project started out a long, long time ago and has had many, many, many bumps in the road along the way. The most, uh, leaving behind litigation with the neighbors, leaving behind, taking COVID out of the picture, something else that happened on this project was they had a gentleman working on the project, their on-the-ground guy, who kind of did what he wanted to do, and that's what brought this to a head, is, we are looking at what was built that is not built to what they said they were going to build. In our last meeting, if I recall, and the details are a little bit sketchy, we're not sure if we ever got an August set of plans. I, I think you pulled them pretty closely on it.
In fact, we know that we do not, we never received the set of plans in August.
So, we're, we're in a situation where there seems to be a lot of information in different places, um.
What do you mean, I'm sorry, what, what information?
We, we have, excuse me, we have a, uh, without, without the applicant in the room, I'm gonna be careful how I say this, applicant insists that we have been given the information, we don't have that information, so that's a situation where we don't have the same information, the applicant is building on the property, not to the plans that we approved a while back. So, we seem to have a series of, uh, I don't want to call them misunderstandings, but our expectation and what they've done don't line up. Um, I, I don't, it, it's unfortunate, Mr. Costa's letter got to us today, um, late to the package for the meeting, and I read through it quickly, um, by the way, letters from attorneys, don't scare me. There, so, it goes on to say, and Mr. and Mr. Gardner said this in the past, that he's concerned that, um, he's run out of, um, the extensions he has in order to get this project going forward, um, which I understand, but I know that's his problem, not ours, but we now have acres and acres and acres of glass panels in an area that was changed from being a great environmental resource, that may stay like that for a while, so that, I would, I would ask the board to consider that too. Um, it's unfortunate when we end in a situation where the sides start fighting about details and not looking at what the overall good of the project might be. Um, I never, a- and I said, we, we, um, in the past, Mr. Costa was the attorney in the room when we got the gas station figured out.
I knew I knew the name of the truck, like, how?
Yeah, he's the guy who sat down with us, rolled up the sleeves, and we got it done, they walked out of the room, came back and said, let's get it done. So, I don't really want to throw, personally, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater right now.
And that baby would be what?
Uh, have a finding on the project that's gonna bring it to a stop, that's gonna put them in a position, I don't know, don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but if our findings are, bring us plans that you're going to build to.
Yeah.
That's one, that's one thing. Um, and does that impact them coming back in two weeks and discussing with us or not? I don't think so.
Yeah.
But it, it, the project seems to have taken on its own life, and I think the proponents tried to rein it in, we've tried to rein it in, the departments here in town have tried to rein it in, and no one really knows what the expected endpoint is going to be. Is that, that's, is that where we are?
Sort of, sort of.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm asking a question, yeah.
Can you respond to Jeff?
Oh. Yeah. I just want to note regarding this letter, it is striking that there is absolutely no reference to law, bylaw or regulation anywhere in this document. And so what I see, what I read here is, um, he's obviously doing the best he can for his client and making requests, but notice that's not anchored in any law or regulation.
Yeah, I guess, but I read the letter and it's, the second, the third to last, the second to last full paragraph is nothing more than a respectfully asked of the board, not, not prematurely vote to require a formal site plan modification application, I instead recommend the board modify my client, and I'd like to attend the meeting on February fourteenth to discuss.
So.
So, I, I, I just, I, I, I see where we are, I see where the town is, and I think I honestly see someone saying, we gotta get the minds together, here we go to work, and that's my piece on it.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Got me?
Yes.
Just real question for their other questions.
Mark and Julie and Nathan, okay?
I, it's possible that they believe, they being GPR and MOB, they may have been under the impression that, and given, you know, uh, the conservation agent, these construction record plans back in August, and perhaps, and Dan, I think, may have received them, maybe they CC'd me on them, though, I don't recall, when I looked in my inbox, I couldn't find them, that's why I have to ask them again. But they, they have the perception, perhaps, that they, they've complied as much as we asked them to, now, I'm, I'm skeptical, but I, yeah, notwithstanding that, I, I, you know, I think a few weeks to mull it over with advice from council is not unwarranted as much as, I'm frustrated too about this project, how long it's taken, something like that, it's a.
And I'm sorry, forgive me.
But anyway, that's all I, you know, now we have, you know, we have this sort of, you know, thing that, you know, they've, uh, made modifications to, but it's not a full plan set.
So, I'm, may I ask, Mr. Chair, may I ask another question?
I just want to make a.
Go ahead.
Okay, sure, yes.
Shoot, no, I remember, I'm sorry, there was something. Oh, I'm not sure that Amy's gonna have anything more to say, I mean, seriously, because when, in relation to elected officials and their authority of the board, there's only so much an attorney can recommend, because, because ultimately it comes down to our judgment, and some, and this is a, and, and so that's something their attorneys, I think, rightfully so, are reluctant to, 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 uh, to dive into. Um, so I'm not sure, and so the question I have is, what meaningfully, what meaningfully changes in two weeks? Notice they're not saying, oh, at February fourteenth, we'll have an amended set, set of plans, it's not.
But may, may I ask, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I think they referred to these plans that were given to the, um, concom, why can't they just submit those as the amended set of plans? Move forward.
Because I could, I have.
Okay?
Yep.
So.
Why can't they?
Yeah, so, we, we don't have them in the room, I don't, I'm frustrated by this, and I'm sorry, Julie, no, I just.
So, go ahead, Julie.
So, this is my second term on this board, um, usually I'm trying to point out how new I am and how much I don't understand, but I will now say that I've been through quite a few of these, and we have never seen someone before, as I don't think, you can correct me, that hasn't been able to submit plans they supposedly submitted, haven't been able to just show us, oh, here they are, like, I mean, sometimes we can't get the mondo board to work, like, forgive me, but like, we have never been in a situation where something has gone on this long, where we're constantly talking about little tweaks and little things, and please just understand, and please, we'll be here next week. This is, the letter from the attorney, if we're gonna just say we're all just skimming it, is probably, mm, the first third of the first paragraph says, but, so it, it talks about us, again, at a board meeting in November tw- two thousand and twenty-two, that we're all doing our best to try to see them through and give them our due diligence, but mayhem ensued, and then, again, it's not quoting law or fact, it's just saying other people had concerns in our town. Our town is not mayhem, our town has rules and expectations, and also, as Jeff is pointing out, gives kindness and understanding to, life happens, and we have to see, well, I mean, that's what our board have seen do.
I think we're very flexible.
Has been, I think we've been overly flexible.
I think you've been significantly flexible over the years.
I would, I would agree with that.
And, and actually, that, I'm sorry.
And, I'm still talking, so, and we've been overly flexible, and so, we are now dragging out a process that, Jeff, you're being very kind by saying they might need this to move along, well, then they could have moved this along a lot sooner by following the plans they had, or following the rules we kindly have written out that are expected to be followed, so, clearly you know I stand on moving forward with a site plan modification, as we would ask anyone who doesn't build to their plans to follow, because those are the expectations for everyone, but I will add a question from my own learning that, of the conversation I'm hearing here, um, so Jeff, you're pointing out, if you don't, I'm supposed to say through the chair, to Jeff, um, the idea that the site plan modification would be a delay for them and a hardship for, I should be saying, Air Solar Two, right? What sort of extra burden does a, a site plan modification, and maybe this question's better for Mark, what does a site plan modification then do, does it stop the clock and, I, I mean, to me, I see it being something that they have to submit plans, which they're saying they already have, um, what, where's the onerous process here? Because to me, it's one last piece, I'm sorry, but all I've seen is my fellow board members who are volunteers, and the people that work for this town have many, many, many meetings which are outlined in this letter, to try to help them along, so where is the onerousness for the poor, um, Air Solar Two people?
For them, uh, they would, time and money, uh, but what was.
How much time and money, can spend a lot of time and money for my fellow board members and town people?
Well. Yeah, well, I'm not saying a lot, uh, you know, I, I don't think it would take much time to, you know, what they've submitted, you know, to consideration.
What do they have to do?
They would have to incorporate that into a full plan set.
Yep.
And it might take a, a little bit of time on their part, and I don't think a lot, because they've already fought through some of these changes, so I don't think that.
Right.
They had exhausted.
It's not like starting from scratch, it's not like redesigning Solar Two from, from the beginning, and, you know, and then
Right.
time with coming before the board, because, you know, obviously, we, we, you know, it takes time to, we, we would have to advertise and do the butter notification.
So, we've always been, for the base.
So, we're talking maybe, uh, you know, end of February, if they, if they act quickly, February twenty-eighth or early March,
Yep.
and if we act on it fairly quickly, they could be, uh, putting a shovel on the ground in April.
So, I think we're helping along.
So, that's, you know.
Yep. If I, if Nathan hasn't had a chance yet, I'm sorry, thank you, Julie, by the way, well, well played.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad you've been here for two terms, uh, the, I went through some of my notes, uh, we approved this in November of two thousand and twenty, this went to deed, this is recorded in the registry uh, on November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, uh, with a list of requirements for the applicant to fulfill, and every applicant who runs through these lists gets their certificate and the project is complete. So, it's, it is, there is a story of why we're here two years later, incomplete and deviating from plan. The last approval from this board, to my knowledge, was November two thousand and twenty, there has not been an approval. And we have not received signed stamped drawings or application for modification since November two thousand and twenty.
Agreed.
Right.
Agreed.
So, this, and what we, what was agreed, and they had twenty days to, uh, rebut this, is that no substantial modification, et cetera, et cetera, and in point number two of the findings, um, shall be, uh, shall be made any substantial requests for substantial modifications shall be made to the planning board for review and approval, so my first question is, and there, Mark, you quoted the bylaw, three, five, two B, which authorizes the planning board or the building inspector to, um, authorize insubstantial changes. Uh, I don't think this, this, this talks necessarily about substantial or major changes, that, do we have any record from the building inspector? Well, let me back up, does this, uh, finding here say that the building inspector does no, does it override our bylaw, which, which takes precedent, the, the recorded findings or the bylaw? Because it removes the building inspector from being able to make substantial, uh, make decisions on insubstantial changes.
Uh, by the way, I don't think, I do know that the building commissioner has not issued any verbal or written approval of any modifications.
So, it's moot, it's moot if he has authority or not.
Right.
That's fine, and we have no, so there's been no cha- no authorized changes.
Correct.
Since November two thousand and twenty.
And, and something that, you know, I, I take issue with in, in their letter, besides mayhem ensued, was, in the first paragraph, they, uh, Attorney Costa says, yet these deviations have previously been vetted with the board, maybe September, well, they may have discussed them.
Okay, well. They, they need to bring the facts to the table.
But they have, we never approved of anything.
Right, and that's what I'm.
Yeah, right.
I'm trying to get to are the facts, right? The facts are, we have a registered decision from November two thousand and twenty and nothing since then, that, yeah.
Can I reinforce what you're saying?
Okay.
If I can look at, if I look at Mr. Costa's letter in the last paragraph, uh, I instead recommend that the board notify my client of, missed the key part, of what more is required from him for an adequate review of the updated plans for the project, and I would say simply that what's required for an updated, uh, an adequate review are those updated plans.
Yep. Absolutely.
It's as simple as that, we don't have updated plans.
It's already on, I'll, I'll cut to the chase on whether or not we need a motion, it's already here in the agreed, uh, findings, I don't think we need a motion, it's already stated.
The honest, the, I thought the only motion we would need would be to accept an extension until the fourteenth of February.
I agree. Uh, second question, what surety does the town have today?
If I may? They can't connect it and make money. Until they have an approve, they have approval from the town, they cannot use it to generate electricity.
Uh, let me.
It is currently generating electricity and not connected to the grid.
Let me clarify my question, I appreciate that answer, but it, you helped me understand that I'm not asking your question.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks.
Um, what money or covenant does the town hold today to remediate, uh, or continue this project?
The covenant is gone, so, we're, though we didn't sign, the board has not signed a release that they made a motion to approve on December thirteenth, however, I think they, they were offering the town a, a bond of ten thousand something originally, and then they proposed in their letter of November, at the end of
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mark.
December. Yes.
The original approval had no financial service.
Covenant.
There was no financial money, and
Yes, right.
if you, you may recall, we spent a fair amount of time with the past superintendent of DPW, typically you need to get the cost, and based on the cost, and when, they, when this came forward as a solar field with three homes on it, they were gonna have to build a road that was gonna be accessible, that was gonna be okay for homes, when the homes disappeared, the road turned into an access driveway, which is a very different animal altogether, and there was really no cost associated with that access driveway that would protect the town. The, they also were required, and I don't know the dollar figure for it, but they have to keep money aside for the decommissioning of the field.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand, twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
Exactly, and that, that's money that's going to be set aside, given to the town for future decommissioning, the assumption is that the field would be twenty-five years old when it got decommissioned.
It doesn't state that.
Well, no, but that's, that was the conversation, if I recall, and again, this is my memory, which is always, always fallible, um, so we have, we do have some money, but.
Do we?
They would have, they would have had to, uh, I don't know when the decommissioning money came forward, I just don't know for sure.
I'm, I'm in, it's, it's.
It's a good question. It's a good question.
It's an open question, I, I'd like to have the answer of what money or surety the town has for this project.
Well, whi- whi- which is what brought us to the conversation that they were, that the component was offering. Last month, two weeks ago, is let's give you some cash so we can get this thing going, so we can move it and get it done, so we can plug it in.
Because.
The, the piece that's killing them is they can't attach it. That's the piece.
Doesn't, doesn't.
It does, there's no financial.
Doesn't make any, doesn't have any bearing though on whether or not there's surety in place for a project that's being built.
I don't know that anybody at the SCAP can answer that question, I'll talk to the town, town manager.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry that that's, that's an information we have at our fingertips.
But it, it addresses the concern of what could be, worst case scenario, what could become of this property? And what does the town have as resources to deal with that?
That's it. So I look, the, the thing is, I'm, I'm trying my best not to look backwards and trying to look from where we are to the future. And what I can't wrap my head on is how even we have a conversation two weeks from now. About let, what we're going to walk you through our revisions and our plans and give you some numbers. Again, without a, a meaningful plan, against which to judge, I, I, how do I arrive at a decision? How do we arrive at a decision? I mean, that's the problem is that the baseline is.
I can't see this, I don't see in two weeks arriving in a decision. We're at the same point we are now, we don't have a guy, we don't have a map.
We've been at the same point for a long time, let's, let's do it right.
That's what I'm saying, I'd say let's, you know, I have to admit, I'm going to show my cards, I, I'm for, we, asking for, we want an amended site plan so we can move this forward. Because I don't see any other way to move it forward.
Uh, in answer to Jonathan's, uh, uh, questions about the bonding, they've offered.
Nathan.
A bond of ten thousand two hundred and fifty, which the town has not yet formally accepted.
That was two weeks ago.
Right.
Not in twenty twenty.
That's what, I think Nathan's question is.
Oh, oh, right, right, right.
Nathan's question is what money do we have in hand now?
Twenty now, oh, okay.
That can be used as surty against the prob, against the project not going forward.
Right.
What's our recourse?
Thank you.
If we have twenty nine thousand dollars, I'm going to be amazed if we can get that taken down to twenty nine grand.
Right, all we have is a question at the present time.
Yeah. Yeah.
In their December twenty eighth letter, after the mayhem ensued, they, they offered in their letter, um, and this is what they wanted. DPW to sign off on, a total bonding bond of thirty six thousand seven hundred and fifty.
So.
But, but, you know, of course, none of that has been accepted or agreed upon by anybody.
Um, I, I take issue because in the special conditions, number four. In the event the property is no longer used primarily for photovoltaic solar energy generation, the landowner applicant, interesting, owner slash applicant. Is responsible for the removal of all installed equipment. And the decommissioning work shall be completed to reasonable satisfaction of the town of Air Planning Board. Number six is where it says decommissioning amount of twenty one thousand nine hundred. Uh, should be post, post a surety to the town, uh, in accordance with the schedule. Uh, da, 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 da. Um, so there should be a recourse, worst case scenario. If this, um, if, if this project needs restored.
And if I recall, they have a lease on that land. And that lease is held by, um. Forgotten LLC Calvin War owns it.
Cowfield.
Cowfield, standing. So ultimately, the landowner would be Calvin War.
My last topic.
Please, Nathan.
Thank you for your time. Um, and this goes to Julie's question, what is the impact of a major change? Right, there's, there's insubstantial or minor changes. Sounds, if I understand you, Mark, the impact of a major change is, it's, it's another design review process. So there's a submittal of a drawing and a, an application for, um, for change. And then a, a discussion, sounds to me like that, like, like we discussed, that will take. Uh, a couple, few meetings.
Right, in this case, uh, we may also do like we've done for, or like we're planning to do for Strat Hill definitive. As to higher independent engineer.
Sounds very wise.
So, right.
I would, I would support that.
So, I think we're at a point where we need to make a decision whether we want to just. Defer any further conversation or discussion till February fourteenth. In the interim, the applicant has requested a sit down with the town planner or representative of the planning board and perhaps someone else.
Oh, yeah, DP, 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 just like the meeting we are.
DP, DP, DP.
Yeah.
But that's the thing, I felt like we actually had that meeting last week, um, so, may not with Cal, not with the applicant, but we had that internal meeting.
But no, it's our laws, this needs to move on.
Or, and the option is, we, we wait two weeks till we say no, um, we, we vote on a finding that says no, we continue to insist that. The applicant is required to submit a modified plan for approval.
The applicant does have an existing plan. That they can follow and complete the project at their earliest opportunity also.
That's true, they have an approved plan. Do I hear a motion?
I'll do it, so I make a motion, I don't know what I'm supposed to say, that, do I say the applicant? Submit. A modified site plan.
Application, application for a site plan modification.
So moved.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, what's the language again on that, that we?
Oh.
I am moving that the applicant submit an application for a modified site plan approval.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
I'm staying.
Chairman votes aye. Do, are you recording the votes for another, for just?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, all right, so wait, yeah.
Three in the affirmative, one abstention.
Okay, so three upfront, what, three guesses.
Correct. And one abstention.
One upset, and so it passes.
Um, I'm going to call a five minute recess and at that point we can bring, ask Ken to come in. Because we're done with this all too quickly now.
Right, yes.
So five minute recess and then, uh, we'll ask Ken to join us.
Thank you.
Have you resumed the meeting?
We're all here.
Um, as I said earlier, Nis, Nisoya, we have a, a note dated January twenty fourth from, uh, um. Nisoya Foods Council, Thomas Givens, asking us to extend, an extension to the, the next planning board meeting, the fourteenth.
I think, I'm sorry, wonder if you'll let her in?
Sure, I'll, did you want to do it?
Either way, I was just going to say.
I'll just do it real fast.
Can I, can I move that we, uh, open the continuation to site plan special.
Yes, please do.
Yes. Aqua for Old Lake District, a stormwater permit hearings to Nisoya Foods USA, one new in the way. So proposed major addition to the manufacturing plant building with related site improvements.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Got a second, all in, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Um, so I guess what we're looking for is, I just needed a, a motion to, uh, continue the fourteen. Can I, go ahead, make a quick comment. I don't know if they need to be here, but I think we need to double check the, uh, I just happened to be going through the zoning and something else, but. We're going to need to double check the Aqua for Old Lake District and our responsibility there for this project, just to remind you, we thought I could note of that. There's specific requirements, this job is, as we know, it's the second one on the list, the special permit, so.
Right.
We just need to review our zoning as regards to that special permit, just.
Oh, yes, I'll, oh, yeah, I'll be doing that, um, yeah, and you'll see.
Could you make a note of that, my friend? Yeah, we'll have to refer to the section in the zoning when we.
Right, section A, I think it is. Yeah, and I also, and I'll get to this later in my update, but I wanted to, uh, prepare a spreadsheet of deadlines and statutory requirements and all that sort of thing. And for Nisoya Foods, and I believe the, uh, the deadline for the site plan and the special permit is, in this case, is. Coinciding, but I will double check on that, but, uh, fourteenth of March of this year is when. You know, the ninety days would, would be us, from when they applied.
This, this is Chair through you, um, it's my understanding that they can also make a request for an extension, should they choose to. By sending a letter to the board through your office, okay?
Yeah.
We're not going to do any, we're not doing, uh, constructive approvals anymore.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, no, no. So, go ahead. Uh, anything else in Nisoya? Don't have a motion.
I would like to move that we continue, um, do you want to ring this to get attorney?
Oh, yes, this is, this is to the Town Air Planning Board regarding Nisoya Foods USA dated January twenty four, twenty twenty three. File number twenty two dash eight zero zero nine, dear honorable members of the Town Air Planning Board. Please let this letter serve as confirmation of an extension in regards to Nisoya Foods USA LLC in Air Massachusetts. My client and I request that we be placed on the agenda for the February fourteenth, twenty twenty three planning board meeting. Please notify my office as to the time of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty three Town Air Planning Board meeting. In the meantime, if you have any questions or concerns regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me very truly yours, Thomas A. Givens, S. L.
Thank you.
Um.
Yeah.
Did you make the motion or not?
I'll move, move to continue, uh, Nisoya Foods USA LLC, um. Uh, site plan and special permit and stormwater permit hearings to February fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Aye, it's unanimous, thank you, everybody. Um. Town planner update, and, yeah, I was going to say, oh, town planner update, yeah, go for it.
Okay, and then, uh, yeah, okay, okay, uh, drumroll please, I have the results of the MBTA community's model run. Okay, well, first of all, in order to keep the suspense going, uh, the first time we did the model run last week, uh, the full model run. Oh, I should have, I meant to bring my back and stuff this, but anyway, we were looking at the, uh, the downtown Park Street Form Based Code district. And the general residence districts that were within a half mile radius of the, of the MBTA station. So with just that area, we were a bit shy. So we made a suggestion to the, uh, planners of the Monitute Regional Planning Commission. That they input the data for the West Air Village Form Based Code, because apparently. The statute allows you to extend a bit beyond the half mile radius if, you know, you can show that you can meet the requirements of the fifteen units per acre. And that the total, the total, um, capacity of, of multifamily housing after you do all this. Is seven hundred and fifty units or above, so when we added, thank God, thank God. When we added the West Air Village, it brought us well over compliance, it brought us to, you know, over a thousand units. Including the downtown area, um, and that's to be about twenty eight units per acre, well over the fifteen, so. That was very good, I submitted the, uh, the electronic paperwork to the state today on that. So ironically enough, though, this is, this is kind of funny, um, they have an interim compliance report that you fill out. If you believe that you're not quite in compliance and you need to do all these different things to get into compliance. But they do not yet have a form for if you found that you are in compliance, and you can just state that. So I had to fill out the interim form explaining that we believe we're in compliance, here's, here's the Excel spreadsheets from the regional planning. So I sent that over to the state, I want to call.
When did you send that?
Today.
Oh, sorry.
And, uh, I want to confirm, though, that they received it, you know, by calling somebody.
Yes, please.
It didn't tell me that it was successfully sent, and I hit send twice, hopefully that wasn't, but, but, you know, it looks like, you know, we are in compliance. So what the regional planners at the MRC told me, though, is that later on, they are developing this compliance form that is a little more rigorous. So, uh, they will assist me with that, uh, when, you know, the DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development has that form. For towns that are saying we are compliant, I think that came bridge on us, and, uh, so, uh.
There's only two towns, so they didn't think they needed the form.
I know, I know, it's kind of interesting, but, uh.
Two cities, I should say.
So, you know, you know, let's, you know.
Oh, cities and towns. I never doubted it for a moment.
Well, I had.
I never doubted the compliance for a moment, we did the work and then we got that.
Yeah, so I mean, yes, having the Form Based Code districts really, really, you know, saved us in that regard, so. Uh, kudos to Alan in getting us through, uh, so, you know, I'll update people if there's any further, you know, findings from the state on this, but.
That looks pretty good.
It looks, it looks pretty good to me.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Um, so, second thing is, you know, I, I had my old sort of paper form to track these things, I said, well. I think the spreadsheet is warranted, so I prepared this, uh, spreadsheet. Right now, I just fill in things, you know, based on my, you know, looking at a paper calendar and all. Maybe I can make it numerical, uh, eventually, uh. You know, like if, if they submitted on seventeenth of January, then you add, you know, ninety days to that, eleven April, I'm not sure Excel will let you do that for the case.
Yes, it will. So call me on January.
I, I plan to fine tune this, you know, in the next few weeks, and maybe somebody can help me who's, who's really good at it, so.
So Mark, is there, is there a column between the Soyah Foods and Seal Harbor?
Yeah, that was, that was a, a site plan that we're not sure what the status is of, so I didn't want to confuse people.
Is this something that we know of yet, or?
Uh, it's something that Charlie Flag, it's, um, it's a landscaping company down there, Bly Street.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh. There, yeah.
But there's nothing submitted yet.
Nothing submitted, no, no, so that's why I, I, you know, with no action on that one yet. And of course, that lease of the question of Strat Hill, uh, so far, I have not been contacted by Attorney Collins or, or Stan Hill regarding when. They plan to submit the, the definitives, but again, it could be anytime. Also, an update on the, uh, on the, uh, RFPs, on the proposals for the engineering. Uh, they, I did speak to remind, there are two firms that hopefully will get us a proposal. Uh, they have not yet, and I think I put the end of January is the deadline for that, so I will follow up with them again. Uh, because I think it would be nice to have somebody in place before or simultaneously with the application. So I will double check on that, but we did say end of January for the, uh, RFP.
So you've heard back from one so far, you said?
I, I've heard back from two that they were interested in giving us a proposal. I have not received any proposals, if I had, I would be bringing it, uh, here this evening.
So there's two that expressed interest, but no proposals yet, and this clock is still running, it's the twenty fourth.
Correct. Right, yeah, so, yeah, that's Strat Hill. Um, also, and something that I've been thinking of, of, of doing is, is sort of a fun project. Uh, for later, later in the spring, sort of, is doing sort of a big picture, uh, presentation, you know, because I know we have the MVP thing going.
Yep.
And there's talk about looking at the, the master plan and the future of what the town might want to handle in that regard. So I plan to develop, you know, a PowerPoint presentation on that, that can be something to inform the board as well as something to inform the public. Uh, later, so.
On.
Question one.
Uh, basically, the big picture of things, uh, come, you know, coming down the pipe, climate change, you know, uh, housing and stuff like, like that. In terms of long range planning, in terms, in terms of long range planning, not specific to any application.
Specific, specific to.
Specific to.
Air.
Long range, long land use planning.
Yeah, long range land use planning, what, what trends and, 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 uh, and.
Right. Demographics, sizes of housing, what, what, where, how many employees are going to be.
Different things.
What do we need for formal housing?
Not, not diving really, yeah, I, I have to figure out the.
Are we actually prepared for the consequences of climate change, which is the municipal vulnerability preparedness? So there's a bunch of these long term things that we, that we need to address. Um, before I forget, I'm sorry for, I didn't mean to cut anyone off, but.
Sure.
Have you had any conversation with Katania regarding the stormwater, uh, issue that we found when we went outside?
Not, not yet, and I, I need to get, yeah, I know.
Can you, can you know to contact them, because I just want to, just make sure that doesn't fall through, they need to have one of their people take a look at it.
Yes.
And then negotiate with, talk to Nisoya about, uh, what's remediation, if that's the right word, right?
Yes. I mean, contact Katania.
Yes, but I'm talking about they're going to may want to have a conversation with Nisoya about, does, if, if it's a retaining wall, for example, is the solution. Then that may be a conversation that the two parties may want to have before approaching us and figure out how they want to do that timing, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. Yeah, I, I will want to touch bases with Dan before, still have a phone call, but, uh, yes, thanks for the reminder.
I have a small comment on that, if you want.
Yeah.
I looked at the drawings electronically that we approved for Katania.
Yeah.
And the space between the building and the lot line is of such a tiny distance, it may only be like ten or twelve feet. That the.
that the drawings don't show any detail of it. They simply show like a gray line or two. They don't even show the slope that's, you know, existing in the house. So something has been missed there.
I should bring, oh, and the other thing is, a few of us set up a meeting to discuss the trail project that, that Ken had brought up at the last meeting to show us, you know, the, what, what you guys height and what, what form. So, you know, there are a few possible grant opportunities to pursue. That one is the district local technical assistance, which may qualify, though there may be a better fit with other programs. And that's what, that's what the MRBC people told me, may be a better fit.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Mr. Visken, if you wanna remind me by email or something, there are grants, there are trail granting people, there groups that give trail grants all over. I get, I hadn't even thought about this, but I get emails once or twice a month, another grant's running, another grant's running, new trails. And I've actually had a chance to sit down and chat with Jessica Gino about this.
Okay, good.
Formally, we find, ten years we've been friends, we finally got together for dinner. I mean, it takes some times, it takes a while sometimes to get together. But when, it just so happens that the Conservation Commission is putting together a green, a green committee, a trails committee, a greenway committee. They used to have one, but it's fallen down. And actually, the gentleman, one of the gentlemen on the finance committee, his wife is very interested in being involved in that. So they've actually got an impetus for getting that to going, going forward with, with, and they're excited about that. And I'm not sure, I had a quick conversation with Jennifer, I'm not sure if I talked to Jennifer Vodakis enough, I was going to, but there's interest there. But that's really cool. And just the whole idea of the trails going across town. And if you think about your comments and how that fits in, the crisscross is right there. It's fantastic.
So I could call Jess to get a good.
Yep, call Jess.
Resources for the, for the funding opportunity.
And I just, I, I can think of Andrew's last name, but his wife, she has PhD, I believe, uses her, her name, and I've forgotten what Catherine's last name is. May I, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I took a ride down Friday and Shirley Road the other day. The concrete cradles are in. So what's happening over there is they've done a bunch of site work.
I'm sorry, where, where is this?
The, um, LNG.
Oh, the LNG, there, okay, right, right, right.
The LNG, so I came around the corner the other day, because it was Sunday and I drive that part, I go that part of the town on Sunday sometimes. And I'm driving, coming around the corner and there four pre-cast concrete cradles sitting there. There's no fencing, there's a roadway.
Well, they put gravel in, they did, they did, they did excavate the site.
You can't see, because of, because of the, 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 they haven't gone in and done all the site work yet. So they, you know, they roughed it in. But you come around the corner and then it sees four monolithic concrete things, you go, wow, that makes sense. So they're, they're doing the foundation first and they're building up. So that's, that's actually, has seen some momentum on it. If you haven't had a chance to drive into Shake a Mill Pond, do it, everything's in.
Yep.
It's really, it, it, what's funny is Bonnie and I were in there the other night and we're looking at the duplexes. There's six duplex buildings in there.
Really?
And driving in and driving out, see what you think, what you think. There's a clear delineation between the two neighborhoods in there.
So.
Worked out great.
It's, it's worked out really, really well. And so that, that's, that's actually, it, you know.
Could we ask the, the owner to invite us?
Yeah, yeah, we could have a, a sort of a final tour.
I don't think any of the duplexes are occupied yet, but.
And I, I will also say that one of the reasons to take another look is that one of the things that we asked for during that process, that review, was to maintain that one large boulder that we thought was important.
It's a lot bigger than you think.
Well, but I think what you'll see when you go out there is the wisdom of that. It really, I think it adds a very positive contribution to the space. It doesn't have that feel like subdivision, you know, just this big space of houses. It gives it a feel of drama, you know, there's this, there's something there shaped, you know, it feels natural. So I think that one of the things you'll see when we go out there is that, you know, you'll see the consequences of some of the things that we asked for.
And, and now, embarrass my wife a little bit. She has patents. She's so proud of those duplexes.
Good.
She really is. She sat in that meeting and said, what about duplexes? And she's so proud of that, it's so cool.
Last thing from my update real quick is, set of plans.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Fourteen Washington Street. They're proposing five residential units, five two-bedroom apartments, I believe they're two-bedroom.
Yes.
And one office space.
This is the fourteen, this is for the fourteenth, so the next meeting, so fourteen Washington for February fourteenth.
No, I'll, I'll tell you right off the bat, one thing that I am checking with council about is, because they're proposing five units, if you look at our inclusionary housing section, and it mentions that, you know, one out of every five units should be affordable. Question is, this is a building that was built in nineteen thirty-four. And, you know, my question to her is, you know, because they're claiming vesting from parking due to the fact that it's such an old building and the air didn't adopt zoning until nineteen seventy-five, you know, are they subject to the inclusionary housing section of the bylaws? So to me, that's not absolutely clear-cut, so I'm asking council that question.
They have a parking management plan.
Huh?
The previous one.
Yeah.
The previous one did.
It doesn't carry.
Now they're taking a little bit of a different tact. It's all, it's all in the narrative, they're in the blue.
These guys never had a parking management.
Yeah.
Oh, that didn't, that doesn't carry in?
They, well, they had, they had a shared parking arrangement with.
They had a shared park, yeah. They, they were looking at using spaces next door.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's all in the narrative and let me, we'll discuss what you think.
I haven't even looked.
This is for us to get ready for the next.
Yeah, 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 but those are your copies. And I'm sorry, Julie, I, I ran out of the bit more.
I feel very understood, Mark. I actually really appreciate it and I, no.
Give me the small.
I don't, I, are you kidding? You need to keep the value of your channel and the project.
The value proposition.
I feel, I appreciate that, but I feel very well-understood with what level of homework I may hope to contribute.
So, anything else on town planner update?
That, that's, that's a.
Alright, everyone have a chance to look at the, hopefully, the October twenty-fifth minutes?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Anyone else?
Please.
Any discussion?
Okay, um, so I don't mind that it's stating that I left the meeting. But I am going to ask that there's some kind of an amendment of how we write that. And I will allow you, as my fellow board members, to decide that we can include that I left due to the bat in the room. We could even include the statement of the bat is less afraid of you than you are of it. For some reason, you, there could be, but it is bold, it is its own statement, and it is a whole paragraph that Julie Murray left the meeting at seven with no explanation as to the situation. Now, I understand that doesn't pertain to planning and I understand we don't need to go on at length. So I could also propose that we just unbold it and we put it in parentheses, like, like it's an aside, oh, Julie Murray left the meeting.
Can we unhold and put in parentheses?
Yes, please.
I think that's a really good, I think it's a really good suggestion.
So would you be willing to modify your motion to include with the?
I consider that very friendly, yes.
Okay.
Modifying to accept that.
And you got that, just the, 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 de-bold parentheses.
In parentheses, less, less dramatic, please.
Because in a hundred years.
People will be looking at.
Or let, let people know there was a bat flying around the room and who stayed and who left.
Do I have a second? Did we get the second?
You did.
Yes.
Seconded.
Oh, yeah, we're delivering, uh.
Move to second, we were discussing.
Discussion.
We amended.
Yes, let's have a vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously voted aye, thank you.
Thank you.
With, under the conditions suggested by Ms. Julie Murray. So regarding new business, last meeting, I, I invited us to think about, and present like a couple of things that we'd like to do. I had a chance to go, Ken had a chance to go, we talked about the trails, we're taking action on that. So there's three of you who haven't had a chance to go. And I was just gonna start, if you don't mind, is it Julie, Nathan, Jeff, is that okay? Is that okay? Is that working?
Can I just get one thing on updates?
Yes.
There's a lot of power line work going on. Where can we find that information on that?
How, what?
Power line.
I'm gonna send you the, the file, please. It's a hundred and thirty-five pages.
Well, maybe the, maybe the summary, but.
That is the summary.
You can get the file, then decide whatever heck you wanna do with it.
Thank you.
Sorry if I guess.
Thank you, Nathan. They went to conservation, that's the only reason I have.
I see.
I submitted to conservation.
Okay, it looks like a big undertaking and.
It's massive.
Never.
Yes, you'll notice the quality and integrity of the hundred and thirty-page description of what they intend to do there as opposed to some of the things we may have witnessed. Yes, it's quite, it's quite impressive and also the quality of the work that I've actually physically seen and the way they've gone about has also been impressive.
You can.
I was so tempted to go walking on the cribbing.
Me too, I'm like, I.
I wanna drive my car on it.
Yeah, I, okay, I wanna give Julie the floor. And the idea was like, and I'm, I'm, it's just to say, is there, are some things on your mind that you, that, that we should put under consideration this year, Julie?
So the only two things I had was just actually to second what you've said, Jonathan, which is looking into where we are with the master plan and having a more normal update. So I would like to be a part of that, that's something I've been a part of before and I.
Oh, you will? Oh, okay.
I would, I would like to be a part of that with you, yes. Um, it interests me and it's something I've been involved in for a while for our town. Um, and the only other piece I have actually doesn't, um, maybe formally relate to planning as we talk about it, but is more about why I am here. I personally had an interest to learn more about why my government works the way it does. And so I've achieved that, I've learned of it by being in this seat. But the other piece was to try to, um, make this a more accessible place for residents to be. To make it, um, maybe a more diverse and open opportunity for people to have a voice in our community and at this table.
So Julie, you referring to the town or the planning board process as being open and stuff?
The town, as far as the roles we're playing as elected officials, but also the town for the other roles we have within town hall. Um, and the way I see this relate to your question is I think we're at a place and this would be a good time for me to start doing those things in small ways within our planning board. So one of the easiest ways I actually see that is I would like to work on a best practice list for our site visits. I think there have been many ways where it is not always an inclusive process. And I think that kind of formalizing that a little to, um, maybe figure out what the leadership role looks like when we're there and what timeframe we're looking at when we go. Because everyone's there with different expectations as far as how long they can be there. And while flexibility is, I think, a strength of this board, right? We're all willing to stay and meet and we're all always here most of the time. I, I think having more structure around the understanding of what you're doing when you go to a site visit or how long these things are, might make it more inclusive for other people to join us at the table. And might make it a more friendly place to be. I see that expanding, um, I think that's just an easy win. But I see that expanding more as far as, um, things we've shared as using our names instead of formalities that kind of get us caught up in gender identity. We've talked about the ways Robert's rules is really important as far as how we get our meetings going, but it's really isolating for people who don't understand it. So to make this a more accessible process while keeping the good stuff, it's something I'd really like to start working with, with our town and I'd like to do it on a smaller level of planning board.
So Julie, would you, a couple of ways you could proceed. One is that you could try drafting something yourself and bring to the table as a discussion here.
Sure.
Or you can invite another, and/or invite another board member to join you in form of, you know, a, call a working group of two and then submit some ideas for us, however you wanna do it.
I, I'm happy to draw some things up here and there and then just.
And when you do, just keep in touch with me and say, so I know when you're ready, when you'd like to have some time on the agenda, just say, you know, I've got a little some ideas to discuss. And then I can check in with the planner to decide, is this, you know, we got room on the agenda for X, whatever the date, month, where.
Excellent.
Excellent.
And I have the support of Robert too, it's a conversation I've been having with Robert Harley as well.
Oh, we did, excellent. That's very good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Julie?
Nope, that's it.
Nathan, what are you thinking about for this year?
I do wanna ask one question I haven't followed from last week. Let me take a little my time to do that. That is, there was a meeting on January eighteenth for West Air Village. Did we ever get any summary or is there something from that meeting? Like a minutes?
Yeah, DMG Group held, Alan was the head of organizing it. Just a very informal meeting regarding what they might be pursuing for the property with Brighter Horizons across from the Devon Plaza. So they're, you know, they're considering their options.
I can tell you that what they're proposing would require variances from the CBA. So in many ways, we're gonna see some of the similar issues we had before. Parking, building height, width on the lot. And so those are concerns and, and it was made clear to the applicant, these are still concerns, that they would need variances, et cetera. Otherwise, what we looked at was a lot cleaner and simpler than the one we saw because remember, this is on the other side of the street now where they have more depth. Because remember, one of the restrictions of the original plan for, I don't know east-west, I'm confused, but do you remember? The side where the plaza is on. Remember, there was all kinds of issues because it's only so deep you can go. Well, this one, they don't have that same issue and it was kind of, I guess I would describe it as an L shape. You know, shoot, the, so you have the frontage and then on the left side, you have a deep wing going back. I think the, is the parking that underground or ground floor? And this is just a concept, not a plan, I'm sorry, concept, just the conceptual ideas, not, not a plan, but that's their, the idea of it. And was interesting to hear, you know, fire and police weigh in, you know, public safety, whatever, just again, conceptually and, I guess the result of that was that we all thought, oh, this is interesting, you know, and then pursue it and take, take, we encourage them to take the next steps.
Okay, thank you. So that ties into my goals. I wanna kind of present them in two parts. One, I hope will wrap into your, uh, your, your plan that you're considering, Mark, which is, let me just set, set the ground. We have interest in West Air Village, have Air Commons coming in. The, there's, you know, eight thousand employees in Devens, as we've heard. Curious, I look at the airfield, it's a large swath of property that's adjacent or partially in, very, very near to Air. The, it, it'd be interesting to know what, let me back up. My goal, one of the reasons I'm here, is I think a little big and I'm looking at thirty, fifty years, what are we doing? And, and what are those impacts going to have, you know? What is the downtown gonna look like in thirty to fifty years from now? And, and can we have, can we help how that turns out? I suspect that the population of Air will grow. I don't know if that's what your findings will be, Mark, but if the population of Air doubles, what does that mean for housing? So I think some of our goals should be, if, if there's evidence that there's gonna be population growth, and I, I would cite Air Commons as the first, uh, uh, piece of evidence. What are we doing to, um, look at our, look at our zoning, your bylaws, so that we could have smaller homes? We talked about cottages, more, um, housing in the, in the downtown area accessible to all of these trails. But I think, I think Air is a very attractive town. Ken, it, it has a potential, certainly in thirty to fifty years, to be a very attractive town for, um, uh, singles, families to, to live in. So I think we should be looking at how, what we should do in the bylaws if, if we anticipate a population growth. That's, uh, number one.
But before you go to number two, I just wanna assure you, some of that's already underway. That there are conversations about reviewing the zoning in the bylaws to say, I'll give you the best example, parking. Is this, this was established how many years ago? Is this appropriate?
Chris is on his list.
Oh, is that the next one? I'm sorry.
No, you're just doing a good intro.
But, what I'm saying is that what you're asking for is not only very reasonable, it's something that others have discussed and I am also very eager to do that as well as to say, is to take that sharp look. Now, Nathan, do you anticipate that this is something we would do ourselves and then present to other town departments? Or do you think that this is something where we form a working group with other town and get, get the feedback and input from other groups, town departments, in thinking about? And thinking about, like a kind of like a, a, a working group of zoning review, would that be beyond the planning board?
I, I think, I think, yes, um, because we then eventually we went, went to go in a year or two to the town meeting and, and have a, a strategy of zoning that allows for, um, that says, here's, here's a projected population curve. Um, this is, this is what we should do to be able to meet that.
Sounds excellent.
I agree. Um, last, then, yes, so parking with all these people, um, if that's true. Uh, hopefully, well, hopefully, there'll be a reason that there won't, parking will not grow proportionally to this number of people. Uh, so, we should address parking in the near term as far as what, how we wanna reduce it. I am looking forward to, uh, this, this, uh, Seal Harbor fourteen Washington discussion as an example of, of an opportunity to demonstrate what, what I, uh, desired with West Air Village, that we would get into a negotiation, uh, and use the tools that Alan illustrated, uh, to, to bring good development into the, the town that has reasons, has, has evidence, has, uh, logical reasons why parking demand will decrease. Uh, one of those key reasons, I believe, to show my cards, is, one of the reasons I love the town of Air is because we are sitting on that MBTA hub, uh, transportation, uh, desk, uh, point. And I s- I want to, there are so many organizations in this state, it's amazing, uh, that, uh, influence development. And I want help to, uh, be an advocate for air, to have a, um, a, a modern and adequate train station, uh, and, and with the regional multimodal feeders, uh, to it, which would include parking, um, but also includes walking paths and bike paths, that would then put, um, make this a, a great town, not only to go to work, but to come. It was, two years ago, there was a lady at one of our meetings who said, you know, air could be the next Kendall Square West, right? As a, as an innovation hub. Wow, wouldn't that be amazing if, if this was a, um, a place where we, we incubate, uh, businesses? So, diverge, I think the key there is, key, a key to facilitating denser housing is going to be, uh, a, a, um, a real train station with all the amenities, the small, the little businesses, the services, the flowers, the bagels, the coffee.
Shuttle to rotten hills.
Shuttle to rotten hill, absolutely.
Old town.
The restaurants.
Towne Wies.
Yep, uh, so, my ask is, how can fellow board members with your knowledge and, and, uh, Mark, help me to be an advocate for that?
For the train station?
For the train station specifically, because there is, Alan and, um, my mind is, the, uh, is, um, Alan is, is quite, uh, aware of all the different organizations, monies, uh, public interest, that, private interest. So, I've got, I've got motivation, but I don't have direction.
I wanna be on Nathan's team.
Yeah, would you, you wanna do that too?
Yeah. Because these are the conversations I have with Alan all the time.
Excellent.
And you touched, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
You started off by talking about more airfield.
Yep.
Okay, twenty thirty-five, there's the answer. Twenty thirty-five is when more airfield will be, will be ready.
So, if I.
So, there's, there's, there's information about that that I can give you and, but you're also talking about getting involved in the Devon's enterprise and a bunch of other things that are already here and existing in town, and so, but this, this is an offline conversation. But if you wanna kind of study though, that's, and, and I, and you said, let's get lunch, let's get Alan to have lunch, that'll be a long lunch.
I, I will say, I actually had a conversation with Alan today, it's relevant to what you just said, Nathan. He wants to pull together a two-day symposium in March regarding disposition of the Devon's property, the twenty thirty-five date, which includes the airfield, which includes the, um, Riverside by McPherson Road, et cetera. So there's already some pieces of that in conversation, but I, I, I love this idea of thinking about how the heck do we get, advocate for train station here? Is that, is that the state, is that the private, you know, Pan Am or whoever that is out there? MBTA?
The conversation we were having, when they were having, when they opened up the depot, is now we need the platform, we need handicap accessibility, we need a ranging platform. We, we like, we like, we like, so, and I think this is a great opportunity to draw in our neighboring towns that use it.
I do too.
And, and, you know, and generating stuff like that, um.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm not interested in incremental change. I, I wanna see a, a, like, like Mark's, just a, like Mark's thing, a pared down, uh, vision for what, where this, where, where that asset is going, and then let's have those steps to get there.
And, and the, the conversation around what Mastio, so Mastio Key owns a road through us, center of our town. What are they doing in the next five years? I don't know why. So there's a lot of information out there.
Right.
And, yeah, no, I think it's, uh.
So Jeff, you're up to, I'm sorry, Nathan, you, you good with those, your thoughts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, you're up to that.
Well, that went out of my head really quickly. So I look upon, so plan, people need to live here, businesses need to be here. And then I take it one step further and I start looking at, as we look to the future, twenty thirty-five, twenty fifty, what is going to be, what's gonna need to happen to take the pressure of people? Just the pressure on infrastructure, okay? We are currently in the situation where we've got a annual water crisis in Massachusetts. We don't water our lots, we have a PFAS issue here. Um, we have multiple trash collection solutions in this town, none of them are good. But everyone fights for their own. Um, so infrastructure, we have a sewer street in fact that was built in the seventies. I'm not saying that it's not up to snuff, but as we bring in more and do more on, and do more things about it, we ought to start looking at that. It's a fifty-year-old, sixty-year-old plan, um, you know, so, not exactly planning as much as how do we add housing for eight thousand people and what's the impact on our infrastructure? The conversation around air commons getting funded included a piece of, when you build something in town, you pay for a sewer connection. You don't pay five dollars per minute in your foot for a piece of pipe. You invest in the future of our ability to handle sewer pressure on our system by giving us money. And Dan Mounts Campwick was unwilling to give that up for our water and sewer infrastructure, which makes a lot of sense. And Noah was looking at this, well, wait a minute, guys, be nice to us, it's like, we found, they found another way to get the overall permitting cost down so CBA can make, could approve the comprehensive plan, but we can't give up on what it's gonna cost us to keep our sewer plant running. So there's a, there's a, there's a, a yin and a yang, if you will, of that, so that's another fascinating thing. How does that impact us, um, bringing people into the planning board as alternates looking at, not that I don't want us all to be on the planning board, this is a great planning board, but we, we're kind of at an inflection point, newer people are moving to town, they're interested in getting, in getting involved. And, uh, Mark will tell you, he's been holding on, white knuckle, it's been a white knuckle ride in the five years he's been here. Thought air was a little sleepy town.
So you think we should consider getting alternates on the board?
I would consider, you just talk amongst your friends, build, build, build a team, you know? And to Julie's point, there's boards all over town that are, need people.
Yeah, sounds.
Building team is huge, guys. You know, so, um, I have less and less that's incremental, but I guess maybe you know I've been working in multimodal transportation. Um, I, I spend, I spend more social time chatting with, um, folks at Devens, just 'cause we like to ride bikes together and do other things. But they have a long-term plan for more, they have a long-term plan for West Main. They have these plans in place, so it's just, it's meeting the people and having the conversations, and how do they get together? And we can be at the table. Talk to Neil about more airfield, he's like, you're really thinking about that already? Yes, we are. Does that mean more airfield, more airfield's the next step going out that way? And it's a great opportunity for a mixed-use residential, commercial village. Sitting on top of the Oxbow, it's a beautiful place. Um, how about a linear park called McPherson Road?
Something I'm interested in.
So, there are, there are things like that that are happening, and all of those things are gonna transpire because alternate transportation needs to be put in place.
Yep.
We can't keep, you can't get a thousand cars down Bishop Street from McPherson Road. But you can put twenty buses on there to carry a thousand people, or, you know, if you could, whatever it works.
We got you, yeah.
Anyway, um, so I don't have anything really, you know, I kinda, poor Julie walks by my house and we talk about crazy stuff all the time, but that's it. Air's a phenomenal hometown, and so that you guys know, on the air community page today, a resident, whom I don't know the residents, I'm not gonna tell you their name, but USA Today has those, those surveys, ten best restaurants, ten best towns for food, air's on the map.
The entire USA?
USA Today is ten best towns for food, I don't, I gotta, can't go five of them.
Air, Massachusetts?
Osawa's tremendous, Lucius is fantastic, Marcos is great, and people are so, waking bacon Marcos, but think about our little town.
Woo ya.
Woo ya.
Think about our little town. So we have these little pockets of phenomenal.
That's true.
Okay, um, you know, and, yeah, and you can go to Tucson's Fish Fry, unfortunately, we, we have meetings, but you can go see all your neighbors on Tuesday night, Italians for Fish Fry. So it's a really interesting town, it has a lot to offer on those ways. So I don't have anything specifically, I don't.
I like that.
Um.
So what, what, so what I would ask is, so if we're looking at this, I didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to ask you what you would like? Would you like to, another board member to work with you with any of these, or would you like this to be a, a sort of agenda topic?
So, I'm watching into a very busy year for myself and a change, so I'd like to be available to the board members.
Okay.
Because this is stuff I do, and I'm, if nothing more, I can offer the networking piece. Let's talk to this guy, let's talk to that guy, you know?
Okay.
And I have background in bylaws, you know?
Beautiful.
So.
Well, excellent, I, I just wanna make a general comment, how much I appreciate that all of you have put, put thought into some things that you would like to do, and, and I, and I'm really enthusiastic about these ideas, I think they're great. And, um, I definitely want to not, to follow up on these. And that would mean thinking about what you, we, everyone just think about what they would like, very simple thing, like for instance, with the master plan. I just found out Julie's willing to work with me, uh, working group to, to do that five-year review. Um, and then, she'll do, draft herself some ideas about making the site, uh, visits more accessible, and then we can discuss them. Nathan, the review of the zoning and bylaws, let's regroup and see what other departments we wanna bring in there and see, let's, let's talk, probably with Alan, Charlie, and some, but let's see who we can bring together, be interested in having that conversation, thinking forehead. And let's roll, and we'll roll parking into that. The train station, I, I just don't have it, I, I'm gonna ask Mark and Jeff and Ken, everyone just, just think about who we need to talk to to get advanced that, because that really is important, that's a big long-term, that would be transformation, isn't it? But it makes so much more, now, with, with Air Village and then West, you know, what, West Main Street, suddenly it's gonna be the pressure to, to do so, the train station's gonna go.
So, I, I'll make the offer with that one, and that is to draw the, uh, help, the communication between Dan Sen- uh, Representative Sena's office and, um, Senator Eldridge's office. Because I've sat in meetings with, I've sat in meetings and at functions with both Dan Sena and, um.
Eldridge.
His first name, excuse me.
Jamie, it's on the check that we wrote.
Jamie Eldridge, but I went to high school with a guy named Eldridge, so I don't wanna get it wrong, me. Um, but they're very, they are, they are as laser-focused as they can be on that.
I understand there's, there's an amendment on a large bill that.
Yes, and.
Would rule out, rule out diesel locomotives by twenty thirty, um, and, and transform MBTA overall, if it made it.
Diesel, it did, actually, the real, the, the truth is, it's diesel electric, there's no such thing as a diesel locomotive.
Right, not for tonight, I'm gonna keep us on task, technically being accessible.
Um, so, but also with the nut up, with the new governor and the new governor's transportation group, this is a huge thing. And by the way, MBTA-based planning, it's Mitt Romney's idea. How's that for weird? I'll tell you about it.
All right. Um, thank you, everybody. Anything else on old business, new business?
I have something.
Kendaz! I didn't know you guys were gonna take that much time, sorry.
You didn't know how motivated we all were?
So, no, I didn't realize that, thank you. So one of the, this, this will be quick, I just gave you this, one of the items we did talk about that I brought up was right in the same vein as what you're talking about, which was zoning changes for affordable housing. And we, if you remember, Janet Provedakis came before the board and did mention that we're gonna start a, a group, a working group, or members of the Affordable Housing Committee, affordable housing trust, and the planning boards. So, we had an affordable housing meeting last Friday, Wednesday, I guess it was last Friday. They asked me to put together some ideas to start with, which is what I did, and you've got it attached here. So, these are some of the, the items in the, in the bylaw now that I think are negative to condensed housing or, or smaller housing, smaller units, whatever the case might be, and smaller lots. So we have the open space residential, you know, development subdivision section, which requires us to, you know, hold fifty percent of the land and we can, we recommend people moving it, you know, into a smaller footprint. And we've seen now three examples of that, the fourth one I think is gonna be, uh, Stratton Hill. But, this particular thought process here talks, the easiest one for us to understand is actually to go to number four, just for a minute.
Mm-hmm.
And then I'll let it go. And on our table of use regulations, we ran into this with Stratton Hill when, when a member of the audience asked us of why we couldn't put, you know, multifamily over there, because he lived at Autumn Ridge, John Cavendish, I think his name is, I'm getting it wrong, but, uh, we don't have, we don't allow multifamily in A1 and A2, so. An honor for us to get, to step towards, you know, more condensed housing, smaller units. One thing that I left off here, and I, Alicia Hursey has it on her notes now, is some towns, I don't know if I ever mentioned it to this group, I, I have talked about it in affordable housing, some towns incentivize smaller homes. They actually give you a bonus for putting in smaller units on smaller lots, so there's a density bonus. So if you can get your thing down to like a seven thousand square foot lot with a fifteen hundred square foot home with one garage instead of a twenty-five hundred square feet with two garages, or three garages, you can get more, you can get a dense, density bonus for more units.
For developments.
Excuse me?
For developments, yes.
For, for, right, so, we need to think about, if you wanna get into the big picture of thinking, then these are, these are some of the sections that I highlighted for people to think about and go from there.
Ken, I've got a question, so the idea here is, uh, looking toward the fall town meeting.
Right.
And is that because it's just, this is just not enough time to make the spring town meeting?
Oh, yeah, there's no chance for the spring town.
Okay, I just, I just need to float that.
Yeah, the idea would be to use these ideas or any other ideas people had, because I was closer to the zoning, I, you know, sketched it out for affordable housing folks. And then go through one by one and see who has an idea of, do we agree or disagree? You know, a perfect example is, is number three, where we say that if you have a, a minimum floor area on a, a single-level unit, it has to be seven hundred and fifty square feet. And that, you know, you could, you could be in a, like, you know, there's condominiums that are five hundred square feet, or studio apartments, whatnot, so.
Yeah, and there's, you're also running against border health regulations, and some of our border health regulations in town exist because of a density issue that happened.
Yeah.
When it was Devens.
Right.
When it was a fort, there was a lot of people living here, and some of them in suboptimal, sub, suboptimal conditions. So we still have some, we may have some, uh.
Pushback.
Vestigial things.
The point of, the point of the list is to get the discussion going.
Yep.
Then, as we chip through the discussion, we figure out if we wanna move, what we wanna move forward and what we don't. Simple as that.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, would you ask, may I ask, would you consider adding payments in lieu of?
That's there already.
Where?
It's in inclusionary zoning, already in the bylaw.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that that comes up and that we, as we start discussing it, we start having that conversation at the table with proponents.
So Ken, what would be necessary to move this from concept to a warrant that we could get on the town meetings?
Well, it has to go through the working group, that people have to have a consensus, that then we'd have to bring, bring it to Mark to write up an article, and we'd have to publish it and for advertising for the meetings, pub, open to the public, after we decide what we think's important, and we have to bring it to the public.
Public education followed by public hearings.
Public hearings, all of that before town meeting. So it would take from now till the fall to get it done.
And by tradition, fall town meeting has always been changes in laws, bylaws, and stuff like that, whereas spring town meeting, spring town meeting's beyond this budget, because the town budget is a June thirtieth, July first. So April is when we do the budget, October's when we do other businesses, if there's other business to be done. That's actually called a special town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and my, so my question is, and it, just the practicality, in order to get this to fall town meeting, at what point would the working group have a proposal, say, we could bring to, to table, actually discuss as a board, for example?
We're getting the working group put together first, so.
Oh, okay, so, oh, I thought, okay. Oh, I thought the working group had sugge, oh, these are.
Suggestions for a working group, so we've, we've decided that we're gonna have a working group.
With between housing and planning board?
Correct. We have it established, who's on that, we, we.
Yeah. Any volunteers?
I'm, I'm gonna be fine, 'cause I don't know. I mean, I'd like to get some knowledge, because this'll, we'll, we'll, we'll go through this process a few times. It'd be good learning experience for me.
You would be interested?
Yeah.
Okay, working group.
Okay.
So Ken, myself, Nathan?
Oh, we're gonna be careful.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can't have three.
Oh, oh, all right.
Can't be.
Tell you what, I'll, I'll, I'll drop out, you and Nathan, right? Because that makes even more, more sense, because I'll be involved in a number of other things. So if Ken and Nathan are, be part of the working group with affordable housing?
That okay with us?
That's great.
And then with the goal, you guys present some ideas for us for input from the planning board, and then we can hash out some language and then start the education here.
And my, I presume my.
Of course.
And maybe Alan.
Alicia Hershey.
Alicia. If I have any, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, listen.
Yeah, you get involved in that, and then we'll get you to be the, uh,
Right.
Planning Board Representative on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
Just, just, it, just cycle it through. I mean, people should be involved. Um, just, you know.
Yeah, we do some really cool things.
You do that, and then no one signed up for any of the drinks, so just thank you for your time.
Ken, you got some other stuff on your, uh?
No, burden the already burdened.
Well, that was all that's printed in this group.
To answer your question in rough dates and times, if you're going to put an article on the, um, Halloween town meeting, basically, it's the fourth Fri, it's the fourth Monday of the month, October, or the, or last Monday of October, um, you need to have it already bound up, ready to go a month before.
Okay.
And then you need six weeks before that to put it together, get the writing, get the, so.
Thank you, Jeff. I guess I go, excuse me, again, there could be one other twist to this. So there's gonna be a working group between affordable housing and, and planning board, but there's no reason the planning board couldn't just look at these and append them on the road.
Absolutely.
At a time.
Let's do it.
You could put, for instance, you could put on one item on, on agenda, let's say review section ten-three on the next meeting agenda or something, do one item at a time.
Oh, I like that idea.
So that as board, you're looking at each item and get a feeling for what's going on.
And if you feel something on the list is necessary to do, March thirty-first is the deadline for submission of all work articles for this year's spring town.
Oh, I'd never make that.
I'm just, I give you the opportunity, but I agree.
So that was my, my next suggestion.
I love that.
If you wanna put one item on each agenda, that we could take, 'cause you're gonna have, we're gonna have to have the text with us when we do it.
Yes.
Because it's the text.
So we need to have, be prepared. So I, I would just ask, Mark, if we just keep an eye on the weight of the agendas, like I know next, we're gonna have Air Soul to Amos, so next week, probably not.
The fourteenth will be.
But let's keep, when we have an opening, it looks light, let's add one by one each of these little items, and then we can actually go through. So that way Nathan and Ken can go to the working group and say, well, here's some input from the planning board on this particular issue. Love it. Anything else?
I just think it's, I sense you do fun stuff at the end of the term, you know?
It is.
It's rewarding.
It is fun, and we're, I, and my plan, I, I don't know how to.
Weirdness, eh?
I'm hoping for an exciting year, in the best way, you know what I mean? It's good stuff.
Did we ask you what you want to do this year?
Yeah, you did. You did, yeah, you did. I volunteer, I was interested, actually, the zoning, the zoning review, the trails, looking at parking, the train station, the master plan, so all of you have overlapped the stuff that I was wanting to do, so that's good.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you're looking at your working group, why are you not including zoning board? Like, they're listed on here two or three times, is there a reason?
Yeah, because.
Is, is it different in their process? Is that a fair question?
The reason I'm not listing the zoning board appeals on there is because I wanna have the group in consensus whether we make these changes or not before we pass the zoning board appeals to their opinion.
Fair. Yeah. And planning and housing seem to look forward, where, yeah, okay, I'm just trying to learn.
What are the overriding goals of this effort?
Yeah.